Are we live?
Yes.
Okay, great. Can't see it on TV. Good afternoon. Welcome. This is a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay. We are at the Veterans Memorial Hall. It is 3:30 PM, 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. It is Tuesday, October 8th, 2019. This is a special study session on housing. And welcome to those of you in TV land and those of you in the audience. Good to be here. And with that, I'll let you introduce it, Mr. Collins, and then I'm going to have the presentations and then allow for public comment at that time. So with that, turn it over to our City Manager, and I should call the meeting to order and note that there is a quorum of Council members present. Thank you.
Details. All right. Good afternoon, Scott Collins, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor and Council Members and community members here in Washington at home. Very important discussion this afternoon, and important to note, it's a study session, so we're not looking for action. This is really for information, discussion about a very critical issue that's being grappled with here locally and regionally and nationwide. Housing is a critical issue for the state of California. It's well documented that an average cost of housing in California well uppaces the rest of the nation, and nowhere is that more true than the county of San Luis Obispo, which is one of the least affordable housing markets in the United States. As affordability decreases, it becomes difficult for folks to make ends meet. They overpay for housing. They have to drive further between work and home, and ultimately can wind up houseless or homeless in dire cases. According to the state, the demand for housing is approximately 180,000 new units per year, and current production is half of that amount. The underproduction over the last 10 years has led to a deficit somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.8 to 2 million units statewide. In that context, Council has identified housing as a critical issue for their 2019-20 goals. Goal number four states that the city will want to complete its land use plans and zoning policies and also address affordable housing issues, including item number four of the work plan, which is to work with the slow counties and cities therein on a regional partnership to develop solutions to the housing issues. Staff is going to provide information on several housing issues, including changes in the state housing law, regional housing infrastructure grants, grant funding options, recently approved regional housing needs allocation arena for the city, and our status on the housing element, and local opportunities to provide affordable housing production. We are blessed to have two excellent presenters here, as well as our Planning Director, Scott Graham. We have Dave Molnax with the League of California Cities. Really, they're here as a league to defend the interest of cities in Sacramento and maintaining local control over the issues that matter to our community and our council. So we're very thankful to have Dave here, as well as Carolyn Berg with the county. She is the Principal Analyst out of the CAO's office, who was hired specifically for her skill sets to help kind of develop some regional solutions, bring people together, including honorary city managers from each of the cities here, and work together to come up with solutions to bring back to our communities to help address some of the issues. Ultimately, what we're facing here is a deficit of potentially 10,000 units countywide, and adding housing anywhere is a challenge. But we know that we have issues to address, and it's not just about adding housing, it's about how do we develop policies that protect the affordable housing we already have here. So with that, I would like to bring up Dave Molnax with the League of California Cities, and then Carolyn to follow after his short presentation.
And Dave, I just want to, on part of the council, welcome you. Dave's a good friend to cities and very knowledgeable and present in many of our policy considerations, and we appreciate you being here this evening. Dave, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be out here in Morro Bay. Talking about the subject that's on a lot of our minds these days with housing, just for the people at home or in the audience, the League of California Cities represents all 484 cities in the state. We have training and educational sessions and conferences, so city staff and city councilmen can learn about the new laws, learn from other cities, the challenges and successes that they have had. And also, we have a lobbying advocacy arm, because there are about 500 bills a year that get generated up there in the legislature in Sacramento that deal with local government, mostly local control and local revenues. And it's incumbent upon us to stay engaged and educated and able to speak in a coherent fashion, in a coordinated fashion, up to our legislators to make sure they understand the challenges that you face as a local community and that other communities around the state are facing in regards to some of these policies coming out of Sacramento. Now, this past year, we had about 2,000 bills, about 300 of -- yeah, hard to say that with a straight face. 300 of those bills dealt with housing, and most of them dealt with local control and revenues. Now, although they did pony up with a couple billion dollars for planning and homelessness last year, remember, but that's one-time funds, but we're happy to finally have the state put their money where their mouth was, because the governor and the Housing Community Development Department have stated that we are 2.5 million housing units behind what we need here in California. And the governor proclaimed early on that he wanted to build 3.5 million homes over the next seven years. So that's 500,000 homes being built between now and 2025 is what his goal was. Now, I'll tell you, over the last 40 years, twice the state has built over 200,000 homes, and those were in the boom times, in the early aughts. But normally, we are building somewhere between 80 and 140,000 units, and last year, we built 77,000 units. So there is a challenge, and you have a lot of different ideas coming out of Sacramento on how to address the challenge. You have a governor from the Bay Area, and you have a lot of powerful senators on this housing policy area from the Bay Area as well. So oftentimes, the ideas coming out of Sacramento might be ideas that are appropriate to cities that are dense and have a lot of public transportation, but might not really apply or be appropriate to communities like Morro Bay or cities along through here, the central So what we need to make sure we do, this last year, out of the 300 bills, we bottled up most of them, and what I will say is, most of those bills got bottled up in committee primarily because local officials like yourself, local groups in your communities lobbied very hard to their elected officials, whether assembly members or senators, depending on where the bill was, and those bills got bottled up, because even though sometimes it's hard to get our message up there to Sacramento, they eventually have to come down home and come down to their area. And they don't want to just, you know, make everybody mad down here. So, but what it does, it does take a lot of effort, because the League of Cities, we do not give away political contributions. What we do is we bring leaders from every community to the table, so when we're trying to make, whether we're trying to negotiate or try to push for some policy up there, we're hoping to bring local elected leaders, business leaders, labor leaders, and community leaders from around the state, and that is where our strength lies. So again, it's always very important to stay educated and engage in this process. Now, some of the bills that we did bottle up that would have been very deleterious to local control and local discretion, the bills that are going to be coming back, because it's a two-year legislative session, so it's 16 to, or 18 to 20, so a lot of the bills got bottled up this last year, but they have one month, starting in January, to get out of House of Origin. So like SB 50, which was a bill that Senator Weiner from the Bay Area got a lot of attention for, a lot of headlines, but we bottled that bill up in the Senate Housing Committee or Senate Appropriations Committee. That bill now has only the month of January to get out of the Senate. So you can expect a flurry of activity on some of these bills early on. And so, early on in January, I'll be reaching out to all our cities to make sure that we have letters in, when it's appropriate, have phone calls, set up meetings with our legislators here in our division, whether it's assembly member or senator. And again, I want to remind you, SB 50, that would take away a community's ability to limit density. There'll be a lot more height. I know that all of our cities in the central coast love the idea of eight, 10, 12-story buildings. SB 50 would take away the ability to stop some of those, especially around transit areas, transit-oriented areas. And the transit-oriented is defined as also with bus stops. So it could really have a lot of impact on local communities, whether it's a train or bus stops that had a certain regularity, if not completely defined on what that time interval would be yet, and that'll be dealt with in committee coming up this next year. One of the challenges has also been, when you're talking about housing, and they wanted to build 3.5 million homes, and they want to force housing mandates on your city, the frustration, frustrating things for local leaders such as yourself and up there at the League of Cities is that housing, you can't just put housing in a silo. There's so much attendant infrastructure that comes along with housing, whether it's wastewater treatment, whether it's roads, whether it's water, they all go hand in hand. And you can't just force communities to accept a bunch of homes without giving us the funds and the tools to meet those challenges. Like I said, this year, they did give up a couple billion dollars for homeless and some affordable housing, but let me also say that a billion dollars, when you spread it around the state, it's about $25 a person in your community. And those are one-time, that's not a continual revenue stream, that's a one-time. So $25 a person's not going to do a whole lot in communities like ours, and our challenge has always been, up in Sacramento, they tend to have that one-size-fits-all cookie-cutter approach in their public policy approaches. And we've been very successful over the years, whether it's in the initiative arena, if we've had to go to the ballot box, or again, making sure that our elected officials are aware of our challenges and our needs. And where this housing issue is going to have to land, and what we're hoping is somewhere between helping the state meet the challenges of housing in California, we all want to do that, but somewhere in between that, and again, what's appropriate for our community to make sure that we maintain the most discretionary ability in laws, to be able to make sure those laws and mandates are appropriate to our communities. What works in San Francisco might not work here in Morro Bay. The one last thing I'd like to close on, too, is there's been a lot of pressure from certain special interests up there in Sacramento. Again, the legislature's up there, four days a week, every day, they go into a lot of fundraisers and people in their ear all the time, and that's why it's very challenging for us to access that ear. Now, there's been a lot of pressure from some housing advocate arenas and some building arenas to declare a state of emergency, that the governor should declare a state of emergency for housing. If they did that, it would waive most local ordinances, regulations, and discretions. Now, the challenge with doing a state of emergency on housing is, when you declare a state of emergency, it's usually about flooding or fires, and there's a time limit you can attach that. Well, you know, we'll declare a state of emergency, the fires are out, the emergency's gone. Well, with housing, how would you put that time limit? You know, you'd have to declare a state of emergency for the next, I don't know, 25, 30 years. But that's, again, the challenges we face in communities like here in Morro Bay and all our communities here in the central coast, is that quite often, there is a bubble up there in Sacramento, and they really forget what it's like to be on the front lines of these type of issues. And again, what I will tell you is, it does make a difference when you all call and write letters, send emails, and have meetings. It does make a difference. Like, all the time, I talk to staff and members up there, and they say, hey, on that bill, we only got four phone calls or three letters. Now, when we have a deluge of letters and phone calls, they get the message. And they are, they do get the message, but we, again, we need to stay vigilant. And with that, you can expect a crazy year with an election year coming up, early primaries in March as well, and there's going to be some crazy measures on the ballot as well. There's, it looks like there's going to be a $15 billion education bond. Now, why I bring that up is, again, $15 billion bond is 700 million a year in debt service, all right? So that reduces the amount of money that they can maybe put towards infrastructure and affordable housing, because again, the federal money on housing, for affordable housing, the federal money dried up years ago, it's very little now. The state money has been gone for quite a while now. They get, like I said, they gave a little this last year, but it doesn't go far. So again, we need to make sure they're very well informed of what our challenges are and what tools that we need to be successful. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And Council, what I'll do is, with each speaker, I'll allow you to go ahead, and if you have any questions for Dave to begin with, we'll do that, and then we'll hear our next speaker have questions, and then I'll open it up for public comment. And then I'll --
I'm on the agenda.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I want to get the information out, Barbara, first. Please sit down, you're out of order. Please sit down, you're out of order. Thank you very much. Please sit down, you're out of order. Thank you very much. You're out of order. Please sit down, Barbara.
The agenda says --
Please sit down, you're out of order.
It's on the agenda.
Please sit down.
The first item on the agenda.
You're out of order, please.
Reflect the record, reflect. I'm out of order because the agenda --
Thank you very much. Sit down, please. We're in the middle of a session. Thank you. Any questions?
So much for the agenda.
Please be quiet in the audience.
Oh, yes, John.
Please be quiet, Barbara.
Well, I'll go ahead and ask a question. Dave, can you tell us what other kinds of bills the legislature has been considering relative to housing?
Sure. You know, we can expect some attacks on the mitigation fee structure, and what you see, a lot of the stories up there right now are stories like, one city might have $30,000 a door fee structure, and another city right next to it could have $120,000. And the legislature, whoa, there's something wrong there. Well, one community might want open space, more parks, bigger site, whatever. And that's how cities address those type of needs, and they tailor it to their needs of their community and what their community demands from their leadership. Again, a lot of this is a big educational challenge that we will have for years to come now, to make sure that we're telling our story, the story of Morro Bay. They need to hear that story and what your challenges are. And I guarantee you, your challenges and your successes are shared with many cities around the state. And next week, when we're at the annual conference and all the cities come together, I always encourage our members, hey, reach out to people outside of our area, and I'll guarantee you, there's very similar stories that are thinking about doing something that you're thinking about doing, or maybe you've already done. So the mitigation fee structure is one. There is also, SB 50 will also prevent forever no more single-family residential zones. That's an issue that's picked up a lot of steam lately, that may or may not be appropriate for a lot of communities. So you'd never be able to have just single-family residential. You'd always have to have some parts in that zone that are multifamily. So again, it's these type of approaches that they're really trying to, like, these housing mandates are going to triple or double and triple the numbers they gave out the last cycle. And again, they get these numbers from the Finance Department with their population, they put it through a black box, and they pop out these numbers that, again, sometimes they have a hard time justifying.
And the money, the new money that's become available, could you give us a little bit more information about what that's for, what we could do with that?
Sure. Now, the monies will probably not really come online, most of the money, until 2021. The League is going to be having several webinars for our local communities to learn about the best ways to apply for these monies, to access these monies, and we'll be rolling these out over the next two months. A lot of it will be for planning and some affordable housing, but there's usually, you know, a lot of strings attached to how you use that money.
Okay.
But it will be kind of, it'll be a crazy year, and we can only hope we had as successful years we did this last year.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Davis, yes?
Yeah, David, thank you for bringing the harsh voice of reality to us from Sacramento. The RENA numbers that are developed here in the county, I want to clarify, those are not mandated numbers that the city must develop. Is that correct?
They're mandated numbers that the city must plan for and include into your housing element. And that's been a -- that's a great question, too, by the way, because there is a real push to try to mandate or tie those numbers that you have to plan for with housing production, and if you didn't meet those numbers, they were going to try to pull some of our transportation funds. Now, again, as we have to constantly remind Sacramento is that we can plan for our communities, we can't, we don't build houses, and a lot of times, they seem to forget that. But, and again, you have a lot of special interests up there blaming NIMBYism. They say that there's a lot of obstructionism, you know, through the process. So you have the builders on one hand, you have the state legislature on the other hand, you have the local dynamics as well, whether it's YIMBs or NIMBs, and the needs that our communities face with workforce housing and affordable housing. So it's quite, it's hard to, you know, it's, can't silo it, that's all I'm saying.
Yes.
It's a lot of different elements to the problem.
Yeah, it's like throwing everything into a washing machine.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Braddus.
Well, thank you for that. I found it very helpful. I hear a lot of what the League is trying to stop, so I'm wondering what the League is in favor of and what the League thinks that cities can do. I campaigned on housing being extremely important and wanted housing to be part of the city goals, and so I'm glad to see that we're addressing this now. And I have huge concerns about not having enough low-income housing, housing for our seniors, housing for young families, housing for people on fixed incomes, and especially in a place like Morro Bay, where we're somewhat built out, primarily built out, and feel a little bit constrained, yet I hear, you know, the need from the state, and I frankly hear the need from residents and people who would like to be residents, and so I'm wondering what the League sees as solutions.
You know, one of our main bills was a bill called SB 5, which we were trying to, number one, get the state to come up with money to help us with affordable housing, because when they, we had what was known as the redevelopment agencies that were eliminated in 2011. Those generate, redevelopment agencies generated over a billion dollars a year, every single year, for affordable housing. Once redevelopment agencies were eliminated, that money went away. So what we're hoping to do is SB 5 would help generate $200 million a year, and that actual number would grow each and every subsequent year as well. Most of that money would be going to programs for affordable housing. And so that's what our big challenge is. We want to make sure you have enough discretionary power to be appropriate for your community, but our main goal is to make sure you have the tools to succeed. Again, the workforce housing, affordable housing is a challenge almost all the cities in our channel counties, slow Santa Barbara and Ventura County face.
Can I say a follow-up? Yep. And do you see SB 5 having a chance, having legs, or where is it in that process?
Well, it got through the legislature, and it's sitting on the governor's desk, and I haven't, I was hoping to have some good news today, but he has not signed that bill yet.
Is there, sorry, is there a timeframe?
It needs to happen the next, I think, the next week. I think it's by the end of next week. It either has to be, he can either veto it, he can sign it, or if he doesn't do anything, it becomes chaptered into law.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will send out a full rundown on all the bills that go across the governor's desk once that period has passed.
Dave, would it be appropriate to, again, write another letter of support for that at this time?
Right now, on SB 5, I appreciate all the efforts. The die is cast, and it's, you know, and I constantly talk to different people up in Sacramento, and I've been up to Sacramento last week. Everyone says it's kind of like, it's a 50-50 shot. Now, if we, if, and we'll just leave it at that. Let's hope for the best. And again, it's one of those things, give us some tools in the toolbox to help address those needs. We want to help the state meet those challenges, but we can't do it all alone.
Great. Any further questions for Dave? Yeah. Councilmember Heller.
Thank you for coming, a lot, David. Great seeing you.
My pleasure.
I think that most of us here in the council share the concerns, and we really appreciate the work that you're doing. What's the best way that we can stay in touch with you on an ongoing basis? Is it through your website? Do you want us to call you three times a day? I mean, what's the best way?
You know what? I have, everybody has their way, whether it's text, email, or phone. I'm always available. If I don't have an answer, I'll get the answer to you right away. We do send out, I do send out a legislative listserv to kind of give everybody an update on what bills are coming up and what we can do to be successful on those bills. We have dinners three times a year. We bring in speakers. This last year, we had all of our assembly members speak at each dinner, and then we have the conferences like we have next week that are very, we have about over 100 workshops throughout the three days, and it gives us an idea of what we're facing for this, what we just went through and what we're facing for this next year.
Right.
But please, don't ever hesitate to contact.
I appreciate that. You've always been accessible to me. I just wanted to hear if they're the way. So you're doing a really important function, purpose for all the cities in California. The other question I have is about tourist towns, and what are other tourist towns doing in terms of affordable workforce housing, like Morro Bay, in the context of the demand for short-term rentals?
Well, you know, the big deluge lately on some of the, like, the short term is the ADU laws, and there's a whole slew of them every single year. There are several new ADU law bills sitting on the governor's desk, and once we get through that, I'll be able to give you a more comprehensive and definitive, you know, explanation of what just happened. Again, a lot of the, in the tourist towns, again, the challenges are very similar to other cities as well. Again, they don't have enough money to do these affordable projects. A lot of times, builders don't want to do the affordable projects. So again, it's, a lot of it is about resources. And again, the attendant infrastructure is always important, too, and that seems to get lost in the debate oftentimes. And, you know, we just passed that one bill that provides a lot of transportation infrastructure for years and years to come, but they need to, Sacramento always needs to understand there are other things, too, whether it's, you know, water or whatever the need might be. But it can't be just housing, and we need to make sure that we help change that narrative, because right now, the narrative up there, a lot of the opinion pieces being written by papers around the state and studies, the narrative over the last year and a half or two has kind of settled in on it's local government that's the problem, and we need to make sure we change that narrative and make sure that they understand we're doing everything we can, and we want to be a good partner with the state.
Okay. And one more question, kind of a follow-up to that is, so we're in the, right here, we're really in the midst of this grappling between short-term rentals and the need for workforce and affordable housing. Obviously, one position is that short-term rentals take all these potentially marketable, rentable properties off the market that could be much more affordable. I mean, is, are we the only ones suffering with this kind of a problem here, or what are other cities doing?
You know, a lot of cities, and we're talking about like the Airbnb issue that time, okay, a lot of the issue, since we live in an area from, again, the three counties, slow Santa Barbara and Ventura, a lot of, you know, a lot of vacation people come here for their vacation.
Yep.
Airbnbs are a big deal. A lot of cities have made that where, and there's no blanket, there's no one, there's no silver bullet to address the issue.
Right.
Some cities have said, hey, anything under 30 days can't be done, or you put zones in your city, but then that can lead to neighbors not liking each other, kind of thing. It's one of those issues, again, there is no silver bullet, and what I have seen, the most general thing has been, if you don't want so many Airbnbs out there, they just make it, anything under 30 days is disallowed. But that's another thing, again, that we have certain caucuses and groups within the League that have those shared challenges, and like we do in with our coastal cities group, very similar issues in most of the cities throughout our region.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? No? Great. Okay.
Hey, thank you very much.
Dave, thank you so much for being here, and we'll look forward to seeing you at the League Conference next week. Appreciate your update. With that, I'm going to ask Carolyn Berg to come on up. Barbara?
Will the City Council declare the mayor out of order and vote to have him sanctioned? Thank you.
Bye-bye.
You have a right to enforce the order of the agenda.
I announced upfront the rationale behind it. Thank you. Next up is Carolyn. Sorry for that interruption, Carolyn. We're looking forward to your presentation. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Berg. I'm with the county administrative office, as Mr. Collins pointed out. Thank you for having me here, and thank you for having this conversation with your community. I think this is a really important topic, not only here, but at all of the other jurisdictions in our region and throughout -- in our region and throughout the whole state, as we've heard. And I won't spend a lot of time talking about the problem, because I think we've heard a bit about that, and we'll hear a bit more from your staff. But before I get talking about what it is I'm working on with your city and other cities throughout our area, I, I did want to frame up the problems that took us to the point of having this regional collaboration. So as you've been hearing, not only your city, but cities throughout our county are all experiencing this challenge of having a critical shortage of housing, and in particular, affordable housing for our residents. And not only that, we have a state mandate to be planning for a much higher regional housing needs allocation than we have in, in past years. And that presents some, some large challenges, especially when we're looking at this 10,810 units that theoretically need to be planned for and potentially produced by 2028. And when we talk about that, as you've heard from both prior speakers, the natural next question is, do you have the infrastructure resources and services to support that? And so that's another big challenge we're seeing, is there's a critical shortage of some of those just basic transportation, water, wastewater needs throughout the region. In some cases, in, just in terms of meeting existing community needs, and then in other cases, it's really more as we start to look out to their long-term build-out and populations. But in any case, that's a, a natural question we're all asking and faced with over the coming years. And when we talk about challenges of that magnitude, it's easy to see that, that it can't be just one community fixing those issues. And as Mr. Collins pointed out, we have, you know, our communities aren't fixed, they're not within just one city's jurisdiction. We have movement in terms of where we shop, or live, or work. And so our residents and our visitors are really moving throughout the whole region. And so it makes sense that we're going to want to look at this problem together and try to come up with the best solutions moving forward. And so that's where the county board of supervisors and our CAO and Mr. Collins and the other city managers started coming up with this idea with a housing coalition that has been working with our county board for several years, essentially saying, it's not that any one partner around the table is the problem maker or the troublemaker, it's that we're all challenged with facing, how do we address this problem? We need governments looking at, how do we do our business better in terms of planning for the future needs of our communities? And how do we work with development community on actually producing housing in the communities willing to grow? And that sort of thing. And so that, that generated this idea of having a regional infrastructure and housing action plan between our agencies. And the idea is to create a strong collaboration between the seven cities and the county and our local council of governments, and then also the development community partners. And the idea is to look at, how do we integrate all of our individual communities' land use planning efforts? And then look at what kind of infrastructure needs are there related to that future growth? How do we prioritize among the many needs that our, our region certainly has? And then create a focused path forward. So what sort of funding do we need? What kind of actions can we collectively take? And how do we start chipping away at this housing and infrastructure shortage that we've seen over the years? And interesting, as Mr. Mullenix was pointing out, interestingly, as we locally have been trying to come up with this proactive, I'll call it proactive, in terms of looking forward at the vision over the coming 20 years for our region, as we were coming up with this path forward, the state has also been, you know, really shifting its attention. And when Governor Newsom came into office in January, he really pushed for some pretty bold goals and has started to pull on the levers of state government, you know, in terms of he's looking at what kind of regulatory pressure he can put on local agencies in terms of planning for and developing housing, but then also trying to create incentives. So as was pointed out, there's $1.75 billion for housing and homelessness in this year's state budget, and, and so there's, there's a lot of potential there. One, we don't want to be at odds with the, the state's pressure they're putting on us, and we don't want to get out of compliance with state law. But on the other hand, the quicker we can work together regionally, I think we can present a really strong story about what our communities are doing to address our own housing needs and what vision we have for our local communities and residents, and start to really tell that story so that hopefully we can bring down some of that state funding to help with this rather large issue. And so there's three main lines of efforts I'm working on. On the one hand, I'm working with Mr. Graham and your community development staff and all the other cities and county planning staff, while they develop the individual housing elements for each of the jurisdictions. And my idea there is looking for the opportunities. How do we learn from each other? You know, to some of the questions that came up just a minute ago, how are other cities handling things like short-term rentals versus long-term housing needs? What sorts of policies are put in place? What things have worked well or not? And one concept we've been working on as we meet on a monthly basis is, are there regional strategies we could all, you know, all of the city councils and county board look at potentially adopting that might move the mark in terms of how we plan for housing in the future and what sort of policies we might want to consider? Another thing we're doing through that, that land use planning coordination is doing a regional market study on ADUs and mobile homes, really trying to understand, you know, how does that housing fit into our overall affordability? And so that's just a few examples of what we're doing on the first line of effort with coordinating our housing elements. And then the next line of effort is just general collaboration and looking at governance. So how do we get out of individual silos of our agencies? And what's really going to help us in terms of moving forward? What kind of agreements might we need? Or how do we better leverage council of governments to have some of these more challenging conversations? Trying to think about that. How will we work together better in the long term? And really just building relationships, I think, between our entities. And then the main overall effort is, like I said, as we get through the housing element planning and we understand how each agency is planning for the, that 10,810 units, then we can start to ask the question of, what are all the infrastructure needs that underlie that kind of development? And how, which ones are the most high priority infrastructure needs that we can try to seek funding as a region and try to take action and steps forward on? And so there's a lot of efforts happening over the next year and a half. My plan is timed to line up with the housing element deadline. So Mr. Graham and his team are trying to get you to the state's deadline of December 2020, submitting the housing elements. So my plan is to have this regional plan ready for approval and general public process at the same timeframe. And the idea there is that we can step into 2021 with a set of actions that we as a region want to take and hopefully change that narrative where we're not just reacting to what the state's telling us to do, but we're getting to say what we think as a region is the most reasonable and most effective way forward. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I guess the last point I should make is that my teammate, Ayla Zamek, and I are, you know, working with your staff and the city managers and CAO on a frequent basis. So we are working on the details, but certainly I would envision going out to all the city councils and our county board at some of the key milestones to make sure that you're in the know and getting to ask the questions at the right time in your process, too.
Great. Thank you so much. And I'll open it up for questions. Any questions? Yes.
Thank you for coming. Nice, nice hearing from you. When, when did you say the regional plan is, is due that you're working on? You have a date?
There's no specific deadline, but my target is to wrap that up by December of 2020 as well, so that it stays on track with the housing elements.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Councilmember Braddis had her hand up first this time. She beat you.
Thanks. Sure. Thanks, Carolyn.
Seating to you.
Carolyn, it seems to me that the key element for housing is money. Do you, is part of the regional vision, a vision of where the money's going to come from?
Yeah, that's a key component, is what sort of funding sources exist out there. So there is some of that one-time state funding that's available to help with our planning efforts. I, I think each agency, I don't recall, based on your population, how much you would get out of the state's next year and a half of funding, but they have 125 million to distribute across the whole state for planning efforts. And then there's another 125 million that regions get. So I think this was talked about at the council of government, but essentially, the central coast region from Santa Cruz down to Santa Barbara is looking to benefit at about 8.5 million. And then that will have to get distributed in some fair and equitable way across all five counties and 41 local governments. So we'll probably, hopefully, see somewhere between one and 1.5 million dollars of that. So that's all the short-term needs. There's also the potential to go after part of the state's $500 million infill infrastructure grant funding, and that's really aimed at, I believe, developer and local public agency partnerships to support the infrastructure for particular developments. And then long-term, you know, we have to come up with strategies on whether or not we're looking at bond funding or pursuing various grants or loans for major infrastructure projects. That'll be part of this effort, is really coming up with some of those strategies for how you create the funding you need, I think.
Okay. And are those funding strategies part of your regional plan that you're putting together by the end of 2020?
Yeah, those will be part of them. We won't necessarily have all the dollars in hand, but we'll at least have different strategy, funding strategies that we think will help move towards some of those key infrastructure needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Braddis.
Yeah, could you reiterate or re-explain what you said with the 10,800 units? Or the 10,000-something unit?
Explain where that comes from?
Yeah, or what, how, what would that look like specifically for Morro Bay? Obviously, we're not going to have 10,000 units here.
Right. So I think that's part of what Mr. Graham will go over with you, so maybe I'll let you, maybe you want to chime in?
I can wait till, I can wait for that part of the presentation. That's fine. I was just thinking for the public who heard that, who heard that figure?
But yeah, each agency...
That it doesn't mean 10,800.
That's a really good point. And so, yeah, just as a point, and then he can go into the details, that's distributed to each agency based on a consideration of jobs, housing balance, and the income levels needed and populations projected within those areas. So the local council of government helps to take the state's allocation of 10,000 units and then allocate that out to each individual agency.
And then, when you're talking about all of this collaboration, how does the coastal commission fit into that mix of an integrated approach?
That's a really good point that actually hasn't come up too much yet. It has come up with your team in terms of that is one larger challenge that not many of our jurisdictions, just a few, deal with. It's a good point that we'll put on the radar of, you know, how do we build that into our strategies moving forward?
Great. So I'll go ahead.
Sure. I just have one question. Could you just elaborate a little bit more about the structure for regional cooperation? You said that you are sort of directing it and in the center of it, but you're working with the individual planning directors and the city managers also? And is it a formal committee of some sort that meets regularly, or is it more informal and you're just gathering input from everyone for the plan?
It's been more informal up to this point. So I'm an engineer by background, not a planner, so I've been learning the whole process from each of our agencies and, but we have created more of an informal, what we call housing action team, that's made up of staff of each planning group at each agency. And then the city managers and our county administrative officer meet once a month. And so I also attend those meetings just to give a brief update on where we're at in terms of collaborating on the housing elements. And then I, I envision 2020 being more of a public-facing interaction. I do things like this, where I'll go out and just give updates, but I think next year we'll have a lot more content and some, we'll have more information on kind of where each city's at in terms of their planning and how that fits in with the infrastructure needs.
So we could expect more reports from you, updates, and, and you're going to keep the councils informed and?
Yeah, yeah. I think 2020 will, we'll be putting together a communications plan and vetting that with the city managers and trying to find the right milestones to bring that back to your city council and the other city councils as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Just a comment of, of the 10,800, excuse me, 10,810, it's 391 for Morro Bay, and I'm sure Mr. Graham will talk about that. Carolyn, a question for you. Are there any nuggets or pearls that have dropped out of the sky in the initiatives so far and all the collaboration? That seems to be what I'll call a strategy or an initiative that might cross boundaries of cities, that appears to be something that a city should move towards to help meet these goals? And I know we're all different, but I'm looking for any kind of commonalities in, in those big pearls. Any, any big ones dropped yet?
I suppose, I mean, some of the strategies we've talked about are those loss of housing stock to short-term rentals. That's been a strategy we've talked about. And then also the ADUs, how to make that something that's more readily available to residents. Like, some agencies have created specifications and template plans for accessory dwelling units to make that easier on residents to create that type of housing. We have a, a giant list of strategies actually right now, and all the cities are helping to fill that in. So there'll probably be more coming out of that process. But another thing we've talked about, City of San Luis Obispo, was trying to figure out, how do you, how do you ensure that your housing is going to residents first or your workforce first? And so they included some policies on two of their newer developments that essentially gave a local preference first. Their housing isn't specifically held just for residents, but they do allow process where local workforce would have first take at that housing. And then other things we've seen at more of a statewide level, I think the state went through a process of looking at its excess lands, so things that are owned by the state and aren't necessarily planned for use by one of their departments. And their process found three parcels in our area that might be appropriate for affordable housing. Those are in North County and Paso and Atascadero. But certainly, that's a strategy we could also potentially look at locally, is if there's locally public-owned lands that might be appropriate for that kind of housing. And that's something that helps to offset the house, the cost of each housing unit. So I, I sat in on a presentation last week by some of our planning community and developers, and that was a point that some of our nonprofit developers made, was they're a developer like anyone else. The cost of a house doesn't change, they're just good at finding ways of subsidizing the cost of housing so that the unit, when it's sold to a resident, is at a cost that's affordable to them. And so we can look for these strategies, like providing land for housing or some way of bringing in funding or reducing the process so it takes less time for developers to get through.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Well, great. Thanks. And thanks for sticking around for other questions as we move forward. Mr. Graham, sir, the local perspective.
One second here. Okay, I'll, I'll try to get through this relatively quickly so we have time to discuss, since you have time to take public comment. Oops. So the three main topics that I'm going to cover are the regional housing needs allocation, so RENA, talk about the numbers a little bit. Current efforts on the housing element update, we're in the sort of beginning phases of that. And to get some input from you on SB 2 grant funding opportunities that the council might like us to pursue as part of the $160,000 that's available for us to submit a grant for. So those are the items I want to talk about. RENA, you know, what is it? It's mandated by state housing law. It's an assessment that addresses housing needs that are based on projected population growth, takes into consideration, I think what you heard Carolyn say, jobs, housing balance locally, and also ensures the availability of housing for all income levels within our jurisdiction. We did work with SLOCOG, they're the sort of lead on this, San Luis Obispo County of Governments, to develop it. They, we worked and coordinated with the department, State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, along with representatives from the eight jurisdictions in the county to come up with what those allocation numbers were. And we did a lot of pushback with HCD and got the numbers reduced, some over time, getting certain things counted that weren't initially recognized in the numbers they put forward first. And then we, you know, worked on the methodology for distribution of those units to the various jurisdictions. And then those numbers get pushed into the housing elements. We are currently in our, the fifth cycle of the housing elements, five-year cycle, and we're moving into cycle six. And I think you also heard Carolyn mention that that cycle runs from December 31st of 2020 to, to December 31st of 2028, again, moving from a five-year housing cycle to a... Again, moving from a five-year housing cycle to an eight-year for our housing element. You have the numbers, so you have the 10,810 that have been allocated toward the county. Morro Bay gets, again, 391 of those units allocated as such, very low, 97. The very low includes also extremely low income levels as well, so those two are combined there. Low, 60, moderate, 70, and then above moderate, basically market rate, 164, for a total of There's the income level breakdowns, we can probably move on from that slide. Little bit of background on the status of the current cycle that we're in. That was 155 total units. We had 19 extremely low that we were supposed to provide, 20 very low, 24 low, and 27 moderate, and then 65 above moderate. And here's kind of how we've done. If you just looked at the overall numbers, you'd see 134 total units out of 155, and you'd say, that looks pretty good. But when you actually look at the numbers, it's not that great. We, we've produced, again, 134 units through 2018, but we've overproduced market rate units, which isn't a big deal, we're building housing at least, but we've underproduced on the affordable by 68 units. So, you know, part of the conversation here is, how do we get more of the affordable units? How do we incentivize those things? And what can we do about that? Our housing element's part of that equation, we'll talk about that in a second. We do have policies in place right now that we, you know, existing ones that we have implemented to try to do that. One of them is inclusionary housing, meaning developments come forward and they either provide a certain percentage of affordable, of affordable units, or they pay in lieu fees. We've had a mix of both. We have some housing projects going online currently, Morro Mist and North Main, they're providing units. Black Hills Villa, they're providing the units onsite as opposed to paying, and we've had some other ones that have paid the in-lu fees. You can incentivize affordable housing. We've taken state mandates that are required for affordable housing projects and pushed those into our ordinances. We did that, it's an update and an implementation item for our fifth cycle housing element. You can also partner with nonprofits or for-profits to bring forward affordable housing projects. We had the Moro Del Mar project that's at the corner of Main in Driftwood, 21 units, senior affordable housing, opened up about three years ago. You know, the city put funds into that project to help it move forward. Or you can, you know, take funds that the city has and leverage those to incentivize affordable housing. Problem there is, we don't have that much money, about 300,000. So, moving on to the housing element, again, it's one of the seven state mandated elements of the general plan, requires certification by the State Department of Housing and Community We have, we did release our RFP for the, to hire a consultant back in July, closed in August. The city received two proposals. One of them was non-responsive, was a company that had never done a housing element update. Interesting to get that proposal, but made it easy for us. The other proposer was Placeworks, which our primary contact for the housing element update will be Amy Sinseimer. She's lead on GP-LCP updates and is the person who processed our previous housing element, so has a lot of familiarity with the city. When she was with PMC, when she worked on the fifth cycle housing element update, and that went through, through our process, was approved by the city, sent off her certification, and didn't require any changes by the city. So we're in good hands there. Placeworks is also working with the Department of Housing and Community Development on dispersment of SB2 funding, and she's our local contact for that process. So also well-placed there, I think. And we'll talk a little bit more about SB2 funding here in a minute. Our overall budget for the housing element update, 65,000. You approved the budget for the city, so that was already in there. Nice kind of add-on to that, AB 102 was passed and provides money for housing element updates at the amount of 65,000. So we'll probably be able to take that money, use that for our housing element update, save our affordable housing funds for some other initiative or implementation action, which So one of the things in our housing elements... Sorry, my slide here on my screen isn't updating. The housing element in the RFP was to include the following items, that was an updated density bonus provisions, an update of our housing and lieu fee calculations. Our calculations currently are a little messy and kind of hard to follow. We'd like to make those clear and easy for folks to follow. Wanted to do an evaluation of the city's accessory dwelling unit provisions, maybe provide some incentives in those. We have to update it anyway. We have it updated in our current draft zoning code, but maybe adding incentives, and that might be something we could do with SB2 funding. Want to consider programs or policies that might allow tiny homes. The City of San Luis has been looking at this for a while and doing that, and maybe that's as secondary homes, or maybe that's just allowing them as primary homes and looking at where we might be able to put those. So that's one of the things that might be interesting to take a look at and can provide a number of units fairly quickly because they're pre-built. And then, I think you heard Carolyn mention, you know, looking at a market study for mobile home and manufactured homes and how we can use those as, to meet some of our requirements for RENA. So we're kind of, I think, jumping on the coattails of the county for that. Little bit of opportunities and constraints. First with opportunities, we are, currently we have policies in place and draft in the general plan to include mixed-use overlays, so we can allow housing on our commercial areas, up and be upstairs or behind in those, on those areas. We have an interesting policy for our residential areas, for single-family homes, removing the requirement for a garage. That frees up footprints. We have small lots in town, right? Most of our lots are under 6,000 square feet. So for smaller lots, it would free up space on them to provide room for an accessory dwelling unit. So one of the things we're looking at. We've also implemented a project tracking software, CityWorks, to facilitate applications going through our process. And looking at, we have updated our density bonus requirements, and we would like to do a little further work on that as part of the SB2 funding opportunity there to maybe better define what happens with that. Some of the constraints we're looking at, some of you've mentioned it earlier this evening, city's mostly built out, don't have a whole lot of vacant property in town. We have a measure that requires if you want to annex property, and that might be a simple solution, but not for the city of Morro Bay. We have Measure F that's in place that requires a vote of the citizens to annex any property that's not for public purposes. And then we have small lots. So that affects the ability to develop just about anything, whether it's housing or whether it's commercial property. You kind of have to assemble lots and bring them together to make something that, you know, you get a number of housing units out of. Otherwise, policies you put in place for your density bonus and things like that don't really have much effect if you're only adding one unit to what would otherwise be there. So small lots have a hindering effect there, providing housing. SB2 funding was part of the state's 2017 housing package, there were a number of legislative actions that were taken then to facilitate housing. The intent was to provide a permanent source or funding for affordable housing stock to increase it. Important part, who's eligible? You have to have a certified housing element, we have that, and you have to have, provided your annual reports or progress reports to HCD. Either in 2017 or 2018, we provided both. The amount that's available, again, to cities under 60,000 is $160,000. And the expenditure deadline for that, if we were successful in it, would be June 30th, There are priority, priority areas under SB2 that essentially qualify you basically for over-the-counter funding, and that's if you're going to come up with form-based codes or maybe coupled with CEQA streamlining, California Environmental Quality Act, streamlining opportunities. Update your zoning code, which is what we're doing, to provide by-right housing through your zoning, which is an interesting concept. That sort of pairs with, come up with objective design standard, you need to put those two things together. If you're going to have by-right housing, you probably have to have objective design standards to meet that, if they're going to be able to do that. We have a little bit of a, you know, an issue there because we're in a coastal zone, so new housing, new projects require notification, so it's not like directly to a building permit type phase, but it could be administratively approved, so we could put strategies in place that do that. You can look at expedited permit processing or innovative means for financing. So potential programs, this is where I want the council to weigh in, is, we want to look at allowing housing by right. Again, that would be implemented through zoning. It's a unique concept, and it could be, it also would streamline our permitting processes. Again, the hiccup there is, we are in a coastal zone, we have to comply with the coastal act, so there's notification requirements that go with it. Probably look at revision to our density bonus law. The maximum allowed by the state is a 35% density bonus. Our ordinance right now says we can exceed that, but there's no parameters how you do that. It doesn't tell you, well, you can exceed it, but you need to provide us X number of extremely low or very low-income units. It doesn't give you any parameter, just says it can happen, and then you've got to kind of sort of create your own adventure there. It'd be nice if we had standards in place for that. We can increase residential density in our multifamily zones beyond what our maximums are now, which is 27 units per acre currently. Again, could update the ADU ordinance to add incentives, maybe relaxing development standards for ADUs, those types of things, maybe reduce setbacks. We already, you know, are not required to provide parking. The state, when they implemented that, that opened the gates, and we've got quite a few applications that have come forward since then because it removed the parking requirement. So incentives do work. Couple more of the programs you could consider would be, I think you even heard Carolyn mention this, come up with an ADU prototype plans. So maybe we could come up with four plans that we, that are ready to go, that somebody could come in if they wanted to do an ADU, and we could hand them the plan. That way, the only cost they would have for developing a plan for their project would be for grading and drainage. The plans would be plan-checked through the city and be ready to go and handed to them off the shelf, and we could have three or four, you know, standard plans that we could offer folks for that. And then consider a tiny home ordinance, I mentioned that previously, and then consider looking at policies that relate to maybe affordable by design, that would be looking at smaller homes that are more efficient, things like that. Because I always like to end on a positive note for this, because this is, these are tough concepts and tough things to tackle. We are working and do have an application in from Haslow, affordable, we're on an affordable housing project at 405 Atascadero Road. That's the first vacant lot that's inland east of Sunset, and so two lots basically in from Main on 41. It's 35 units, 17 one-bedroom, nine two-bedroom, nine three-bedroom units. And I think I have, suspected in two weeks, we have the application in for the concept review, and then they'll be giving us the rest of their information for their discretionary permits coming up here pretty quick. And I think all of these units are all going to be at low income or below, at least that was the initial indication I received from, from Haslow. So with that, happy to take questions, comments?
Great. Mr. Graham, so what I was going to do is try to give the audience context. I'm going to open up public comment, and most of the questions, I'm sure, will revolve around staff report, page 11 through 13, which are really the questions Mr. Graham is asking for input on. So with that, I will open up public comment, anyone wishing to come forward. I do have one speaker slip.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Meredith Bates, Morro Bay resident. I'm so thankful that you guys are looking into the tiny houses. I think that's a great opportunity. There is an expo this coming weekend at the Madonna Plaza, all about tiny houses. And I'm not sure if it's there yet, but they're planning on an ADA-accessible tiny house, which would be wonderful for seniors who might have challenges getting into lofts and things like that, that are part of some of the tiny houses. I'm also really glad we're working with Haslow to produce some low-income, truly low-income housing. And we're lucky here in Morro Bay, we have the Places Behind Spencer's, we have the complex on Main. So we're fortunate already to have some affordable housing in our community. I was reading about another community, I believe in Virginia, where they reached out to the VA, and they're working with the veterans for some affordable housing. I don't know how much we reach out to other nonprofits or possibility of working with other groups, but in this other community, they work with the VA, and that seems to be successful. And I did hear, and I'm not sure if this is exactly correct, that Morro Bay, because I went on an interactive map, that we are, we have to follow through with the density situation, but we're exempt from the height requirement of building some higher buildings. And maybe the gentleman from the League of Cities knows more about that than I do, but I was happy to notice that. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Public comment is open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Surveying the audience, looking around and waiting, seeing no further public comment, I will close public comments and bring it back to council. Council, staff is looking for input on the options, as I mentioned, noted on pages 11 in the staff report through page 13. And of course, any questions for Mr. Graham or any of the other presenters that are still here are wide open, and so who'd like to start us off?
I'll start.
All right. Councilmember Heller, thank you.
Mr. Graham, you're definitely the expert in the room, in my opinion, and I think we have a lot of different tools and options and things, and I keep thinking, you know, if we could kind of let you loose and have you come back with a couple of different models. One might be infill increased density upzoning model, one might be expanding city limits. To get a feel for what the options are, maybe work with Public Works to address the infrastructure issue, which is really a point made very clear by Carolyn in her discussion, very important. Where can we increase the density if we wanted to without huge infrastructure costs? And just kind of pick and choose what you think might work and address the funding issues and come back with, hey, you know, this is, this is one thing, one concept we could pursue in this part of town, and this is a concept we could do over here. I mean, you're clearly the expert on this, and we can have lots of meetings and talk about it, but I think there are a lot of exciting options here, and I'd like to just turn over you and see what you come up with.
So, is that a question? I guess it is.
Yes, if we turned it over to you, because you do something.
Yes, I could, and I will. So we have kind of a short turnaround or deadline on this. I'll be coming back with the authorization resolution at the next city council meeting for the grant. Right now, I don't have the list of items in there that we're going to apply for, and if the council's fine with that, I can leave it that way. But if you really wanted to provide, you know, direction about things, you really wanted me, you know, to pursue, this is the forum to do that, and I will put that in the resolution, and that holds me to doing what the council's asking me to go do as part of that, part of that process for the SB2 funding. Other than that, I can put the application together without that, and we just have the resolution with council affirming that you want me to go after the money. And we can certainly put a package together and send it off and, I think, be pretty successful. Again, we're contracted with Placeworks, which is Amy, and Amy's our local contact for SB2 funding, so she's, you know, just waiting for the phone call really from us to kind of talk to her about it a little bit. She would have, I think, been here this evening, except she has, working on a housing element, fifth cycle housing element for Pismo Beach, they're behind, and that presentation is today at their planning commission, so wasn't able to sort of dance at both places, so. So I'm happy to do that, and I can make it work, but if you want to give me specific direction, I'm also happy to take it.
One more question as a follow-up. Would you think it would be helpful to have other people help you? I mean, it seems like a lot to even put on your plate, but could you approach other cities, or could you work with the league, or?
So I, so we've...
You have a lot to do right now, I don't want to bury you with this idea.
Well, I mean, it's, we would go get the funding, we would be hiring a consultant. You know, typically how you would do this, it's just the funding's available now. Typically how it would work is you would run, you'd be doing your housing element, and then it would go identify all these things you want to go do. But the state's provided opportunities for funding, said, here's some priority areas, if you want to go do these, we'll give you the money, go do them. And so the interesting thing about the housing element is it'll have a whole bunch of implementation items at the back, and it'll go tell you to go do these things. Well, we'll be kind of doing them in parallel, we'll be developing some of those things. A lot of them will, will line up with the priority areas for the funding, and we'll be able to execute immediately. And execution typically is through your zoning code. That's how you implement your housing element, will be policies, and you'll go push those out. You might, there might also be things in there to go create programs or something, but part of the implementation, and most of the things I touched on in the presentation, would be implemented through zoning. And so those are things that we can do right away and, you know, kind of in parallel with ongoing tasks that we have. So while it isn't typically how... So while it isn't typically how this might work, it can work because we're already kind of up and running on GPLCP and zoning code updates, so.
One more quick question. So there's the GPAC and all that, so you're working on land use considerations now. So is, am I correct in assuming that it's a fairly timely thing to address? Or are you too far along in developing it or what are your thoughts about that?
I mean, we're probably a little ways down the road on it. I think that we're just now sort of, we've been in a little bit of a pause mode on the GPLCP and we're getting ready to pick it back up. I had to go re-contract with folks, but we're done with that now. So we'll be picking that up and the first thing we're doing is addressing comments from Planning Commission, GPAC and the Coastal Commission on the GPLCP. And then, once we kind of get that all squared away into a final public draft, we'll be taking that information and pushing it into the zoning code because the two need to be consistent, but we need to have that, you know, the update to the GPLCP part done first. So it might line up with that. And it might be possible to do it as part of that and we might be able to contract with, right now Martha Miller's doing it through Lisa Wise Consulting is the one doing the zoning code update. So we might be able to get the grant funding and contract with Martha to do that work. So because we're already working on that, it would be kind of odd to have somebody else do it. But that's kind of what we'd be looking at.
Great, Councilmember McPherson.
Thank you. Could you explain exactly what's involved with developing the housing element? Is there citizen input in that process? What, exactly what is that process?
We'll start off, we have, in the scope, we have two public workshops. That'll be getting input from the public to see what they like us to focus on as well. And then we go develop those policies inside of the document and then we would have a, the next, the second one would kind of be more of a report back, here's what we heard, this is what we're doing. We're also here again to take any additional input. And then we would, you know, focus folks that gave input at that time to come back to the meetings that we would be having at the planning commission level, where we'd be vetting the, you know, the draft documents and that type of thing.
The consultant would actually manage the entire process? Is that what you're suggesting?
The consultant, yeah, they're, they're set up to do that. They'll, you know, they'll manage, the city manages the project, but they'll be doing the work.
Okay. And Barbara Dora left, but she did send us an email and she, her suggestion was to do a study of our housing market. And what do we, have we done one recently? What do we know about our housing market in terms of number of units of various types and how many are vacant and especially how much vacant land we have, where we would have the possibility of developing some housing?
We have all of that. The housing element is required to do an assessment of the land and inventory of the land and determine the number of vacant lots. One of the things you have to do is go back and look at what you identified in your previous housing element as well, because you don't get to count them twice. So that's one of the difficulties that we're going to face when we come up with, try to come up with areas where we can put the 391 units. So that'll be a difficult task to locate them. But, I mean, so we already have a lot of that in the baseline document for the general plan and LCP. It tells you the number of housing units we have, we have the difference between when we did our last housing element and current. We have the number of vacant homes in town, it's about 20% of our housing stock in town is vacant. That's excluding short-term rentals and those types of things. There's second homes that people have, they're vacation homes for them and there's no one in them. You know, how to overcome that, that would be an interesting, you know, that would be an interesting thing to study as well. Is there any way to, you know, gaining access to that? But I'm not sure that's an easy get.
Right. And just, is one of the strategies to actually reach out to developers and try to encourage them? I'm very curious about the property that sits on Main Street that's been, it says it's for multi-unit housing and it's a very large, it looks large at least.
It's about 10 acres.
And it's been vacant with the for sale signs since I moved here 16 years ago. I'm just curious to know.
So three years ago.
Why nobody's interested in that?
Oh, no, they're very interested. They're very interested. There was, we had a number of folks that were looking to buy it and to build multifamily housing on it. The issue came up when they didn't have the final closures. It was previously owned by Texaco and then transferred over to Chevron. Chevron now, now owns it. And they didn't have all of the final clearances when they cleared the infrastructure off the site from County Environmental Health. And so they've been going through that process for the last few years to get closure on that. And it seems like they're getting close now because I've received a call on it saying as much from Stafford McCarty.
Are they, are they working on our behalf to actually aggressively try to sell that property?
There's plenty of buyers. They just can't sell it until that issue's resolved. And so the owners have been, Chevron has been working through that process to resolve it with County Environmental Health. You have to have, you have to have your final closure reports before it can sell. And if you don't have them, then they're not going to, people aren't going to buy it until they know everything's okay, so.
Okay. So what do you think we can realistically accomplish in Morro Bay in terms of meeting this goal that's being set or at least planning for 391 new units in the next eight years?
It's going to be difficult. I mean, we're going to be looking at changing, you know, the housing element, we'll address this and we'll do the study behind, we'll do the, you know, the math behind it. But we're going to be looking at probably rezoning some property in the city or increasing density, because I don't think we're going to be able to meet it any other way. When I started the general plan and LCP update, I actually reached out to HCD because I said, one of the ways I see that the city can increase the number of housing units is to do mixed use overlays in all of our, most of our commercial zones and increase the number. And we had these conversations at the GPAC level and at the planning commission level and I said, hey, we're just going to put the, the density for that at our highest density number. It'll be at 27 units an acre and then those have to work out the plan. And so that's what our draft documents say right now. And when I talked to HCD three, four years ago, they said, yeah, that would be fine. That would work really well. We'd be, we'd be pretty good with that. And we've talked with them more recently and said, well, how are you going to ensure that that property turns over and those units are built? You have, you can't ensure that. My comment was, so we can only count vacant land? I said, well, we're built out. Well, you can annex. I'm like, well, we have issues with that too. And we were surrounded by ag land. I mean, so the idea is that we're going to sprawl. I mean, it's, there's, there's give and take there and I, I don't really know where we're going to end up with it, but the responses that came back from HCD weren't great. And that was in the room with all of the folks Carolyn was talking about, the other, you know, planning folks in the county and with the different jurisdictions. It was, it was not good information, but I wasn't surprised to hear it.
But, but we will know at the end of this process where we have vacant land and where we could be more aggressive about reaching out to developers and trying to make something happen there.
Yeah, and I think part of it's going to be coming up with incentives to make it more palatable and make it less expensive, you know, remove the barriers, you know? I mean, that's why, by right housing's interesting. Maybe by right housing looks like staff, you know, if we put these parameters in place and we're adopting new documents, we'll have a brand new policies and we could have design guidelines that go with them. And it says, staff, you have the ability to approve up to seven, eight, nine units and then anything above that has to go to planning commission or something. Because right now we can approve four. So maybe we increase that number a little bit and that's more on the, on the scale of the size of lots that we have. And so we could, it would make it easier and it would make it faster. And we'd still have the same noticing requirements that we have because they're all in the coastal zone, so.
So those are some of the ideas that you would be bringing forward to?
Correct, yeah. I mean, that's, I mean, they were larger, they were larger kind of, you know, focused in the, in the staff, in the staff report presentation. But that's, those are specifics about what we could do and those are ways to do them. I mean, that's one example. I mean, there are others.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good questions. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you.
Yes.
Scott, you listed seven potential grant-funded activities in the staff report. Is there any reason to not pursue all seven of them?
You know, we want to be successful, so it might be nice to pare them down a little bit. But we could pursue all of them, at least in the initial vetting of them. But if I put them into a grant application, that means we're going to go do them all. And if some of them don't actually make sense, then that wouldn't be great. So we want to, if we're going to put them in a grant, we're saying we're going to go do them and we're going to develop those policies, which is why you kind of want to maybe not focus on seven and maybe focus on four or five. I think some of these things we're already doing in many ways because we've been updating our codes to sort of remove some of those barriers that we were talking about earlier. So really just trying to get, you know, insight from the council about it, is there preferences? If there's not, then, I mean, I certainly can go take this back. I'll sit down with, you know, our consultant, Amy, and kind of go through these. I've already talked to her about them. And, you know, see what makes the most sense for, for Morro Bay and for the process, giving the, we kind of have a short timeline on it, given that it's June 2022 and we have to have the money expended and the policies in place, so.
Okay, so what Councilman Heller suggested at the beginning is, is pretty much what you would like to do and I would like to, to support that as well.
Okay.
Just pretty much put it in your hands because you know more about this than we do and then bring us back what you think is, is the right methodology.
I'm happy to do that. And actually going back to Councilmember McPherson's comment about the housing element and whether we all have public outreach, this grant funding opportunity that we would have, we'll also have that in it. It'll be, in any, you know, contract that we go out with, we'll have a public outreach piece to it, so we get public input. We don't want to, you know, design policies in a back room somewhere. We really want it to be something that's supported by the community because otherwise that's a lose-lose, so.
Thank you very much.
Great, Councilmember Addis.
Well, thank you for answering all my questions via email. I know I had a ton of questions about all the details. Are you saying that with all seven options or all seven ideas, all of these would meet whatever California Coastal Commission might have to say about these different options?
I'm not really so worried about the Coastal Commission. They, they support any initiative related to affordable housing as long as it doesn't contradict the Coastal Act. They would be, you know, kept apprised of where we're going with these types of things. I mean, I, we talk with them all the time, you know, pretty much weekly. And so, you know, if we were going off on anything that was kind of unique that we hadn't seen before, then I certainly would touch base with them. But they're going to be largely supportive as long as we're doing things that, you know, that don't violate Coastal Act, you know, prime policies like, we're going to rezone this area over here that's esch and put houses in it. That probably isn't going to be okay. But short of that, they're going to be largely supportive. They might have issues if you were increasing height in some of the areas where, you know, we have prime views in the city, you know, public views, that would be an issue for them. You know, but I mean, I already know that and we're probably not, that's probably not a solution I'm going to throw out there. So yeah, I mean, we would work with them, you know, on any policy that we'd be bringing forward in the form of a zoning code policy or, you know, it's related to housing.
And I think I'm hearing globally, there's housing shortage and within that, there's affordable housing shortage and within that, there's the SB2 funding. And these seven ideas are specific to the SB2 funding, but don't necessarily address all of the housing needs or requirements or housing element pieces. So it's like one set of ideas within this global content, larger context.
True. I mean, we're trying to take advantage of opportunities that the state has offered up for funding to go study some of these things. Again, usually you do a little bit more of a linear process. We're going to do a little bit more of a parallel process, but the city's used to that. We did the general plan and zoning code parallel as opposed to linear. This is not a lot different than that. You know, it's an opportunity, we should take advantage of it. If we, if we hit the priority funding areas, those are things we need to do anyway. So if the state's willing to give us some money to do it, we should take advantage of it. I've come here before several times in front of the council and said, as grant opportunities come available, we will bring them forward to you. That's what, this is right in line with that, so.
I mean, I feel confident in you, you know, coming up with what that grant looks like, but I also heard you say it would be nice if you had four or five areas of focus. I feel like your expertise is at a level to help us choose those four or five areas of focus. But I will say, for me, it's critical that we have housing for people on fixed incomes and I feel like affordable housing can run the gamut. I know there were some income levels within the, what we kind of think of as affordable housing. And I used to think of workforce housing as affordable, but when I looked at the charts, workforce housing actually seems to be a pretty high income level compared to what I was thinking was affordable housing. So, I mean, to me, it's critical that we bring back the middle class to Morro Bay as much as we can, that we can be a little bit of that trim tab that starts to steer this in the county, but that we really pay attention to folks that are on a fixed income. And I know we had a question via email around rental increases and, you know, how that's coming down from the state. But I think about people who are paying $1,000 a month and even at 5% increase, that's $50 a year, right? That still is a pretty, pretty big increase for folks. So that's, you know, as you're thinking about that, that's where my great interest would lie is specific to that population and what can we do for those folks that are really struggling to be here as well as growing our middle class?
I think a big thing to that, a big component of that is, is coming up with the incentives because it'll make, we've had, I've had several conversations with for-profit affordable housing builders, you know, and on different properties that we have in town. And so there is interest out there. I mean, again, we had Housing Authority of San Luis Obispo come forward and they bought property and they submitted an application, which is fantastic. But we've had some other ones that are for-profit, Haslow's nonprofit, and they're interested in a couple of different properties in town. And we've had, you know, one, you know, two and three different builders out there that do this type of housing, come forward on them and with different ideas. They're trying to work through what makes the most sense and unfortunately the property owner raised the price, but, because I guess there was interest, I don't know. So, yeah.
Do you see that, sorry to interrupt you, but do you see that the same for encouraging family housing, like the incentives for people on fixed income, you know, building housing for people on fixed incomes? Do you see anything different for wanting to bring families back into our area, knowing we've had declining enrollment at our elementary school, knowing that we've lost some of the diversity in our community? Like are there specific, out of these seven ideas, specifics that would encourage young families to come back to the area?
It does seem to me that, you know, if we are able to increase the, the stock of affordable housing, that it does that, because I mentioned to you earlier that 20% of our housing stock is vacant. Just building more homes, a lot of those homes are going to be second homes. I mean, and that's because, you know, people, we have a strong tie to the Central Valley people, so a lot of the folks that come here are from there, but they're also from Southern California and the Bay Area as well. And they'll come here because homes are relatively inexpensive if you're in the Bay Area or Southern California here. They're like, ah, I can have a house at the beach. And so they'll buy that property to retire at. And that's, that's the story that you hear a lot of. Or they've had their, you know, they've had the property here for a long time and they are from the Central Valley and they vacation here regularly and they've had, you know, their home here for a long time. And so those are the types of things you hear. So if we're building market rate, we'll continue to have those things. So you'll continue to have that 20% of our housing stock, which is a pretty steady number, you know, over the years in Morro Bay and was not inconsistent with what I experienced before I came here for the 15 years that I was in Pismo, same thing, number was similar.
And do you see, I don't know if, this is a question, what San Luis is doing around local people giving preference, does that fit into this SB2 at all?
That's an interesting concept. That might be something that more comes into, and I've actually talked with Amy Sinsheimer about this a little bit, that comes out of the housing element piece of it versus the SB2 funding. You know, that's, that's sort of something they're, you know, they've been kicking around for some different projects. Those are requirements to replace on a couple of the projects that had recently come through, I think, is kind of where that, I'm not really sure on the policy side necessarily, whether it was more of a conditioning type thing that they did on a couple of projects that they had come forward. And then my understanding is that the developers were supportive of that, that, yeah, we'd rather have preference to folks that live here and work here, you know, because they're the ones doing business here. So seemed to be well-received, at least from, you know, the initial conversations I've had with city folk, city staff.
And then one, my last question. Is there anything we can do around homeownership? I know some counties, and I know we've talked about this before, so some counties will have houses for sale at below market value, but they have to be sold back at below market value to encourage lower income folks to be able to get into homeownership or young families to get into homeownership. And is there anything with that in the context of SB2 or the housing element that we could do?
I'm not exactly sure I understand the question.
So there might be a development and there's a certain number of units, like say that the new development on Main Street is all for sale. There might be a certain number of units within that development that can be bought at undermarket, but they have to be sold back at undermarket. And I don't know if there's city policies that, you know...
We do have city policy, so the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that we have, that exists now, requires 10% of the houses that you build to be affordable. We can, you know, through the discretionary process, mandate what those are. The policy doesn't tell you, and that might be something worth updating, to tell you what it is, and maybe increase the number from 10 to 15. But you also need to add incentives to make, lessen the cost of the housing as well. I mean, there's, it's a multi-pronged approach, but you add deed restrictions to them, and that deed restriction currently is 30 years in our current ordinance, and we would be kicking it up to 55 years in any update that we do.
And is that part of this SB two grant, though?
That's part of what we're already doing, yeah, what we're doing as part of that.
But the update to like, longer, or, you know, higher percentage or longer years, would that be part of this SB two grant piece?
I suppose it could be. It will certainly be, come out of the housing element update part, too, so.
Okay. It would be my preference to increase something like that around homeownership.
I want to, I want to, too. I think we're sort of behind the times in the amount of, the length of the deed restriction.
Thank you.
Well, excellent questions across the board. I think we all agree, Scott, you're the man. I mean, you're the expert, and we appreciate and rely very much on your input, and we thank you for your expertise. We recognize it, and I also want to recognize the collaborative work that's being done, not only at the county level, but also with our friends at the league, and I think that's extremely important. I think there are pearls out there. Other communities are doing things that may be innovative that we could adopt. From my perspective, what I see is our issue is really that 40% of the stock needed is low or very low-income housing, and for us, that's difficult. It appears we have no problem on the above-moderate side as a consistent opportunity to meet because of economics. And just looking at the strategies you've outlined, I just thematically wrote down, I think, at least for me, what I believe would be important for us. One, I support any rezoning efforts that you see that are necessary, and you've outlined a few in the seven opportunities you've presented, but I think that's important. Two, increasing density, along with that, I would be a supporter of any kind of developer incentives that could assist in facilitating some of the things that Councilmember Addis was speaking of with regard to lower-cost housing. I also would support getting information about any studies you've done, or what land is available to build on, and then what can we do as a city to help facilitate drawing developers or marketing that property to help achieve these goals? And that could be in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce potentially, in terms of what we're doing with them for economic development. But I think we all do drive by these parcels and say, huh, that looks like a nice piece of land there, I wonder what's going on? It's been for sale for 20 years. And so just knowing that inventory or that stock, and what the possibilities might be with regard to zoning changes that might have to occur and/or whatever, but to be involved with that. I support partnerships such as Haslow and People's Self-Help Housing. I think the Driftwood Main Street project is an exemplary project of something that not only is well-designed and beautiful, but also very affordable for a large number of people, and those have been very successful, and I'm happy to hear about the project on Atascadero Road as well. That's exciting to me. I support mixed-use overlays, just as a concept. I also support, and I think I saw it throughout some of the recommendations you made, process redesign to allow development to occur and decisions to be made at the lowest level possible, whether that's at the administrative level or some level above that, but that might involve design guidelines or pre-existing ordinances, rules and regulations, whatever you may want to call it, that might be developed to allow things to move quickly, because they can happen at a lower level of authority and decision-making. And lastly, I too very much support local preference for individuals that would work in the community. I know San Luis Obispo has implemented that, or is implementing that, in my opinion, successfully, and would also support that concept as well for a portion of any development that occurred. With that, those are just some of the tenets that I pulled out of your, again, very comprehensive report, and look forward to you bringing back further information in the near future. Thank you.
Any other comments or closing?
No, I would agree with the mayor. I think you've really done a good job of outlining what I think the priorities are, and I appreciate that, and that's good guidance, so.
Good, great.
I have a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, just to, I'd like to support Mayor Hiddings' comments as well, and my inclination is to definitely look at density and infill, and expanding the city limits and annexing some of our beautiful open spaces, like the last thing I want to look at, so.
Notice I didn't mention it. Thank you. Thank you. With that, we will close out our meeting. Unless Mr. Collins has any further comments, we will adjourn at 5:05, be back at 5:30 for our regular city council meeting. Thank you, and good evening.